So I will call this meeting the city council budget work session to order. Roll call. See Ms. Thomas, are you? Yeah. Do our roll call.
Counselor McGill.
Here.
Counselor Payne. Counselor Pinkston.
Here.
Mayor Snook.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I didn't, I confess, I had blanked on the fact that Michael wasn't there yet, wasn't here yet.
I'll, I'll count his presence once he does arrive.
Okay. I don't mean to short, shortchange him from the, from the discussion, but we'll have, I'm sure, a few preliminaries that, that he, he won't miss out on too much. First of all, let me just mention that the, the agenda calls for, at the end of our work session piece here, calls for public comment. The work session will address only the outside and nonprofit agencies. And we hope that the public comment would respond particularly to outside and nonprofit agencies as well. So with that intro, who is, for the staff, who's taking the lead on the, the work session piece in the presentation of the outside and nonprofit agencies budget?
I'll kick us off.
Yeah.
I'm gonna share the PowerPoint. Maybe. Okay, well, we'll just try it this way. Um, okay, so we're here tonight to talk about the outside and nonprofit agencies. And I'm gonna kick us off, our agenda. Maybe, is, my screen is frozen.
I haven't been able to see the screen share yet.
Me either.
Can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah.
We're hearing you.
And we saw, I saw that said Chrissy Hamel is sharing her screen and it was black with just those white letters on it.
Right.
But nothing else.
Awesome. You all are all frozen on my screen.
We can't see your face either.
At the moment.
Try it again, Chrissy.
No log off and log back on or something?
Yeah.
That's what I would suggest.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna log off and, and hop back on, sorry.
Let's just stand in recess for about three minutes. We'll get, we'll come back.
Okay, I'm back, I don't, oh, now I do, alright, let's try this again.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, we're officially reconvened now. So, fire went ready, Ms. Hamel.
Okay, I'm still having issues with the view.
Chrissy, you're welcome to share it with me and I'm happy to forward the slides for you.
Okay, let me, let me just try one more time.
Sure.
College try here. Alright, I'll send it to you, sorry about this.
Actually have it, I can do it, Chrissy.
Okay.
Send it to me. I can try. So I can open it up.
In the meantime, I note that Mr. Payne has joined us, so we're at full strength.
So, Mr. Mayor, while, while they're getting that straight up, wanted to share a statement about transparency, or I can do it now, or now that we have this up?
Let's go ahead, just, let's go ahead and do it now.
Okay, for transparency, I would like to acknowledge that I and my wife are active in several charitable causes here, either as members of the governing board of a nonprofit or as volunteers for a nonprofit. Those specifically include CIC, Charlottesville, Child Hill Health Partnership and C4K. Our volunteer work for these entities are, for which we are active, is done as part of a group of multiple volunteers and boards and we receive no compensation or stipend. And we have no personal financial stake in the outcome of the council's decision. The city attorney has advised me that I do not have to, I do not have any prohibited personal in, interest in the council's consideration for the vibrant funds decision and I'm not required to disqualify myself from participating in council's decision of the application, so thank you for this opportunity, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wade. Okay, are we ready with the presentation now?
Yeah, I will say that I'm using multiple screens, I'm not used to this. If something goes haywire, just give me a second, because I, my microphone's at one place, my camera's here, so I'm, I'm a little new to that, but I'll, I'll do my best.
Thanks for giving it the shot.
We're all learning new things.
That's it, sorry for all the technical difficulties, it's a first for everything for me, yes. Um, okay, so the agenda for tonight is to talk about the outside and nonprofit agency funding. I'm gonna spend just a couple minutes talking about the contractual agencies and then from there, we'll turn it over to Mr. Smith and Ms. Graves, who will talk about the vibrant community fund process. So, if we can skip to the first contractual agency slide, please. All we see is this cover page, are you, do you think you've skipped slides?
Well, uh. I 100% did think I'd done that, so.
I saw you clapping.
How about now?
Yay!
Now, this is crazy. Right.
You'd think after two years.
I know, right? Um, okay, so contractual agencies, first of all, I want to talk a little bit about what these are. In general, most of these agencies are based on, or all of them, are based on either a regional MOU or they provide services that without that particular agency, the city would have to provide them in their absence. There are two groups, or two different sort of review processes. And as we've gone through this process, this is something that we will look to make a little bit more clear and maybe do a little bit differently next year, to make it a little bit more cohesive. But there are some agencies that are reviewed strictly through the budget office and it's done in conjunction with also staff from the county budget office. So those are things like the jail, the public defender, SPCA, those kind of things. And then there are other agencies that are reviewed as contractual agencies through the vibrant community process, so as we've been talking about this, again, that is something we're gonna address to try to make that a little bit more clear and a little bit more cohesive for next year, but with that, we'll walk.
What is the Charlottesville Center for Contemporary Arts?
Uh, that is live arts.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so on here, we'll start with just a few highlights. The Public Defender's Office, there was a couple, there were a couple of requests this year that were submitted again to both the city and the county. We have, in the past, our agreement with them is that we basically fund their several positions in their office at an amount that's increased each year equivalent to any merit that city employees have received. So the increase here is representative of the 6% increase that we got mid-year, plus the 3% merit that we are budgeting for July 1. I will note here that there were, there were two additional requests. One was for an additional position that came out of the Just Seville conversation. And then there was a request for a supplement for three other positions in that office that are not currently supplemented. In conjunction with the funding that the city, I'm sorry, that the county was allocating in their 23 budget, those two additional requests are not currently funded in the proposed budget. Um, the jail, again, the jail, both the juvenile jail and the regional jail, those are contributions that are based on our bed days that we have there. So for the regional jail, we saw a decrease, for the juvenile jail, we've seen an increase, which makes up our, the differences in our contributions there. The SPCA is basically a formulaic increase. The ECC, those are changes, and that budget is based on largely staff, increased staff cost. John, is it seeing a decrease? That was basically due to some change in their assumptions on service. Uh, Charlottesville Center for Contemporary Arts is again a formulaic increase, that is for live arts. The library, the increase there is representative of some changes, both in a merit that they want to award, they're, they're also moving to some minimum salary pays. And there is an increased hours for a courier. Piedmont is a small form, is a, just a small increase based on services provided. And then offender aid, these four programs that they offer were funded as a contractual service. Next slide, please.
Ms. Hamel. You mentioned something at the very beginning and it, I didn't pick up on it exactly. The Public Defender's Office, can you restate what you? So that's not part of this?
It is part of it, so that's the very first line on this one screen. The city has an agreement by, whereby we supplement their salaries. They are state-funded positions. And the city and the county both provide a supplement to the salaries from the state.
Okay. You, I think you'd said something about one request was not funded that they made?
Uh, actually, two additional requests they made this year. One was, there are, I believe, three positions in their office that currently are not supplemented and have not been supplemented in the past. They requested additional supplement for those positions that was not funded. And then in addition, there was a position request for the Just Seville work that was undertaken over the last few months. And that was not funded.
Great, okay, sorry.
No problem. Uh, moving on down, the Health District, that is for the Health Department and, again, that is based on a formula as well. Regenton, same thing, JABA, they actually did not request any increase that is being level funded with the last few years. United Way, same thing, level funded with the last few years. The Cooperative Extension Service, that is basically, that is also a formula of sorts. That increase reflects a 2% merit increase for the positions that we fund. Uh, Central Virginia Partnership, again, just a minor increase. And then the Central Virginia Small Development Business Center, that is based on a formula that is billed regionally and for some reason, we kind of got out of kilter with some of the other localities. And this is an effort, this, this increase here is reflective of getting us back in line with the other locality shares. And also adds one additional counselor for this area.
Could I ask about Regenton, so my recollection, so that is based on a formula, I guess, from the various localities. Is that ever revisited at any point? Or what's the, what's the basis for the formula? And if these are too many specific questions about things that are outside of your agreement, I can wait.
I can get some more information for you on that. I think the comprehensive services portion of this is more relates to the formula. And it's based on reporting that has to go back to the state. If I'm not mistaken, the Healthy Transitions, the Women's Treatment Center and the Supportive Housing Program were programs that were new initiatives through Regenton. And these have been level funded for the last several years, but I can get you some more information about those.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know because given the amount of need that's there, it's surprising to me that this is level funded. Again, if that's their request, that's their request, but I just recall from when I was on the board, there was a composition, you know, with all the various counties around us and Charlottesville piece, Charlottesville's piece of this. You know, and I, I would much prefer to put money towards Regenton than, you know, police, well, I shouldn't say, I don't want to put a contrast there, but putting money towards Regenton is always a good idea, I'll just leave it at that, so. Versus some of the old.
Yeah, this is definitely reflective of their request, but we'll get you some more information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. Uh, moving on down, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District, that increase directly relates to our participation in the Regional Housing Partnership. That's new for this year. The, and then the Thomas Jefferson Soil and Water, that's just a minor service, minor increase for services. And then the others, Foothill, T-Jack, Free Clinic, and Shelter for Help and Emergency, those increases were based on their applications. And now I'm gonna turn, and we don't have any more questions on contractual, we'll start into the vibrant community, I'll turn it over to Misty, or Ms. Graves.
I, I'm sorry, I did have one question about the contractual. When you first mentioned the, the first line, gosh, I forgot already that Brian asked about.
Public Defender?
Yes, Public Defender. Isn't, um, as we, we got information recently from the Sheriff's Office, is that also a state-funded positions? And we supplement their budget as well, would that be on here?
Uh, so the Sheriff's Office is like the Commissioner of Revenue, the Treasurer, the Commonwealth Attorney. Those are actually constitutional officers. And they are funded with funds through the state, but they're not, they're considered city departments and, as opposed to contractual agencies.
Got it, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Misty Graves, I'm the interim director of the Department of Human Services and it's my honor and pleasure to dive into the vibrant community fund process with you. As you all know, the vibrant community fund process is an opportunity for capacity building and collaboration, not only for the city, but it demonstrates the shared work that city staff have with the community nonprofits and council. And I just wanted to take a minute before I pass it off to highlight the contributions of the community members. So we had 13 reviewers on the review teams for this process, each of whom dedicated about 20 hours of individual work to the process, if not more. They offer a variety of perspectives and considerations and they're able to come to consensus for what they are offering up for this process. We also have two staff leads and I can't ignore the amazing contributions of Chrissy Hamel and the Budget Office. We're making this process run smoothly and stay on the track, so I'm proud and grateful for the commitment and contributions of this collaborative effort. I'm gonna pass it over to Hunter Smith, who is the Human Services Planner for the Department of Human Services and he is the lead staff for the Vibrant Community Fund.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for your time tonight. So, um, the FY23 process continued to develop on the previous year's adjustments. Equity continues to be a major, major focus, and we'll talk a bit, bit more about that in the, in the following slide. Some of the key points this year, we did start the development of a startup opportunity for people that have not applied before, that want to start a new program that meet the prior areas that are, you know, outlined in the application process. We're, we're looking to set aside funds to provide technical support and/or capacity building for these new startups or people that are having, looking to get something off the ground. Maybe had, had a hard time with that. And Albemarle County continues to operate an independent process that mirrors this for funding local nonprofits as well.
Mr. Smith, are you able to say anything at all, and if this is not the right time, we can talk about it later, but the relationship between the county's work and this work? In other words, do you all coordinate at all, have conversations about what we're doing versus what they're doing, or are people kind of in silos?
This is my first year doing it fully, fully with the previous person that ran it before, so I do know that there's probably some, uh, I wouldn't, I don't know, it's not like there's not an official, like, connection between the, the two processes, they are similar. There used to be, I think, I believe they used to be combined, if, if I'm not mistaken, at some point in the past, but um, they're mirror, they're kind of mirror each other, I don't know that the questions on the applications are the same at all.
Okay.
There's not like a, there's not like an official, like, partnership between the ABRT process and private communities that I know about right now.
Yes, Brian, just quickly, they were combined for many years and, I mean, I've been on this committee for the last probably 20, 25 years, I just stopped last year and I think that the city, the county, United Way, they have the same, the same type of application, used to be the exact same application, we looked at them all to, together that they sent out to the, to the agencies. We split up a few years ago when the city, you know, the city went through some changes there, so, but as, as I recall, at least we had the information that, that they had submitted to the county and, and, and united away, so that was something that the reviewers had, so.
Alright, thank you.
Um, well, as most of you know, there are six broad funding priority areas, education and youth, jobs and wages, community, public safety, affordable housing and health. Equity is also a component. This year, the, the equity priority area was intentionally pushed into all the other categories through different mechanisms within the application. Applications are ranked by importance and addressing each area. Essential, important, helpful, no direct connection to the party area. And by application score, exemplary, solid, fair and poor, that's how we set them up. The criteria improvements this year, we requested organizational DEI statements and we also included other questions directly related to equity and how they are, you know, using DEI and their operations and direct organizations. The review team members that Misty mentioned are intentionally diverse, they consist of a blend of consumers, citizens with grant and experience, some city staff and people with nonprofit experience as well. Process continued. orientations are held for applicants each year as well as for the review panel members, so some of the points that we wanted to share are that orientation includes an overview of the application process with kind of what we call a live demonstration, we bring up the Zoom grants format, let people look at it, we go through it a little bit. And we review, we review the review process of, of how it's reviewed with the applicants. How that's done and among some other details. The review panel orientation also includes a review of how the process is designed. We spent some time this year having someone come in and present on DEI and how it pertains to this application process and what reviewer should be knowing, we should know about that. They also cover conflicts of interest and how the scoring matrix is utilized. And applicants are advised that they can reach out for technical assistance if they'd like to. The matrix is also reviewed in the orientation with the applicants as well, I didn't add that in the first bullet, that is part of the process. Um, this is the impact of the equity questions that we wanted to share, kind of, in terms of how the whole process was kind of unfolded and what we learned. We gave the, this, this year, we had applicants had the opportunity to submit their current DEI statement. As well, as well, were asked a specific question related to how diversity, equity, inclusion is demonstrated in their programs. These questions seem to communicate the city's position on the importance of DEI in our community and generated more open discussion, you know, amongst the review panels and, and between applicants. You know, with the previous person that ran this, Gretchen Nelson, myself. The inclusion of these questions highlighted how some organizations are really demonstrating active work towards improvements in DEI where others may need to take a closer look at where they can improve. We did see the kind of a, an array of responses to that. And we plan to continue to focus on equity at all levels of the vibrant community process, including exploring opportunities to score equity-driven programs in a more robust manner in future fiscal years. There was ongoing impact from the pandemic. Some agencies continued to pivot services to focus on emergency needs rather than stated goals that was less than the year before. Virtual services were still part of people's work they're doing. And there was some reporting of loss of revenue due to the impact of COVID-19 as well. And the increased funding requests due to that. Those things are still pertinent this year. Um, here's a, a simple breakdown of what we accomplished and what we kind of ended up with at the end. Um, at the top, you'll see a chart that talks about how many programs were in the, in various categories, so the highlighted category, highlighted boxes are where people were funded. And then we just outlined out here where programs fell that were not funded based on this matrix that we have here. Also below there, you'll see the, the amounts that were funded in Arts and Culture, contractual agencies that went through the vibrant community, you know, process, or not, that were not panel reviewed, however. How much we had in startup funds, the EAP that we use here for locally for citizens and rent support. And then the capacity building amount of money that I mentioned earlier that we hope to use to provide support people that applied and did not score very well or were unfunded in the startup category. At the bottom, you can see the total requests that were put forth into the process and then how much of that was left unfunded. And then my last slide that I have for you. Ongoing efforts and future considerations. We want to, to continue to develop the startup process, make it a little bit more robust and a little bit more. helpful, for lack of a better term, you know, organizations. As I said earlier, we wanted also improve the process for scoring equity-driven applications. We've mentioned the capacity building already, and we need to revisit measurement and the measurement and solutions work group. I'll hand it back over to Misty Graves. Thank you for your time.
A couple of quick questions. So could ask
Sure.
How did you, what was the the thought process about how much money to put in to, could you go up a couple of slides, please? That one. In terms of startup funds, what was your sort of thought process for that amount of money?
Good question. So in the, in the last, when the application process started, we had set aside two hundred thousand potential, for potential startups. So there was two hundred thousand dollar spots that we had, for lack of a better term. And then the sixty-five thousand was what ended up being awarded based on those applications. And so that's just kind of how the application process ended with the startup money. So answer your question.
Maybe. Could you, you had like, you had like a a sort of idea of what you thought might be possible future projects, and you kind of backed into this amount of money for startup funds and
It was the start, this was the first time there was ever a startup part of the process. Last year was the first time. And the way that it was, way that was defined last summer was, you know, we have up to two hundred thousand dollars, up to two one hundred thousand dollar allotments. For startups, they still had to apply, meet the criteria and, and, you know, be able to demonstrate an application that we could, you know, fund. And so out of that process, out of the three, only one was able to demonstrate the ability to be funded. Which is why we need to go back and look at the startup process and figure out what, what didn't work, what went wrong. And then the capacity building is, what we're hoping to use that for is to help those organizations that did not score high, did not receive funding in that category, to maybe spend some time building them up and seeing what they help with. Because we often do better.
And that funding, and maybe this is a question for Chrissy, Miss Hamel, that, that funding line item, ninety thousand dollars, is that basically part of a department then?
It's not. It's actually, if you look in the budget book section, it is in the healthy families and communities, section H. And it's on the chart with the agency funding under, I think it's education, youth and family. And it's just there as a lump sum. So essentially for vibrant community overall, we, we started out the process to keep the pool as level as possible with last year. And so in total, we ended up funding just under two and a half million dollars, which was roughly about eighty-four thousand and some change higher than last year. And the ninety thousand was part of that pool.
Okay. You said two million? I see four million here at the bottom. Oh, those are the number of requests.
Correct. So we, there were just under four point three million in requests that were received. We funded just under two and a half million, leaving the one point eight essentially unfunded.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And the emergency assistance program, what is that?
Miss DeWitt, answer that question.
That's the city's contributions to the Pathways Fund, the Community Resource Hotline that allows the operators to provide one-time emergency assistance to community members who are experiencing financial need. And so that pot of money is how we make sure that continues to be funded during COVID and beyond.
Great. Thank you so much.
I think I'm turning it back over to you, Misty, to wrap up or ask questions. I'm not sure.
Sure. I was just going to mention, as noted in the slide that we were just looking at, I think it's an incredible thing to mention that we were able to fund thirty-one different projects and priorities that again build our city's capacity to meet the needs of community members here. And it's a great demonstration of how we are able to extend our reach out to the communities and empower these community members to partner with the city in order to meet the needs of all of our community members. So I wanted to make note that this is an incredible opportunity for the city and for nonprofit agencies to work together. Any questions?
This is for Chrissy or Miss Hamel again. So if I'm in section H of the book here, somewhere I'll find Vibrant Community Fund listed, or just the actual items that ended up being funded?
Yeah, so vibrant, there's not a section for vibrant community funds. There are pages and different sections for agencies depending on where they fall. But in section H, on page, beginning on page H eight, there's a description of all of the agencies that received money that relate to children, youth and family oriented programs. And the ninety thousand dollars is in the table on H eleven. It's the last table entry, unallocated agency funding.
Okay. Great. So the VCF process basically is what informs these, these pages in the book.
These pages, there also is a page within the public safety section for any agencies that address sort of public safety type programs. And then I believe there's also one under the citywide or management section, which are sort of the arts and cultures, contributions to festivals, types of things. We can, if on the previous slides for the contractual agencies, it lists the pages where basically all the different agency contributions are, both contractual and VCF, you'll find most of them. You can also reference the index, or we can also send you, you know, the VCF report. Itemizes all of these and summarizes the programs as well.
Have we gotten a hard copy of the VCF report yet?
We emailed it to you earlier this week, and it's also on the city's budget webpage.
Oh, no, I'm looking at it electronically. I just wasn't sure if we'd gotten the physical hard copy one yet.
Pardon me, pardon me.
No, I don't know that I that's probably was my job. I have not made the little hard copy, but I can do that for you if you need me to.
Um, I mean, it
Can do that.
I don't know.
I don't need one. Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay.
Who need, does anybody else, does anybody need a physical copy now?
I went ahead and printed out a physical copy, but I gather there have been a couple of tweaks since the, the version that came out last week. As a consequence of some of the issues I'd raised. Could I ask one question that I'd, I'm about, about, about a couple of, the OAR Drug Court, OAR Therapeutic Docket. In that case, I, as, as I think I indicated in my emails, I, I had thought or would have thought that those would have been regarded as part of the contractual kinds of things that we had, were taking out of the, the VCF process. But aside from that, I'm looking at it, there are, they have requested for those two items, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars basically, and we've awarded them a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Why is that? Why are we giving them twenty-two thousand dollars more than they asked for?
Is that Chrissy, you can answer that one, Chrissy? Because I don't know that I can answer that right in the moment, but I can try to figure that out.
I mean, and if you don't have it now, this, this information, you can get to us, you know, before we just make the final decision. I know that some of this is not going to be easy just to pull up right away, so.
Well, I know in, in both cases, when I asked a question about those awards, the answer seemed to be in part that we were making an award based on the number of participants or the number of city participants or, or something like that. I mean, the practical effect, as I'm, as I'm looking at the numbers I've got, is that we're giving, we're not only giving more than the eighty-five percent, we're giving more like a hundred and twenty percent or a hundred and fifteen percent. All of which suggests that at the very least, there's a typo someplace. Unless there's a reason why we're now giving more than they asked for.
Are you looking, what are you looking at?
Yeah, I'm kind of lost on the numbers too, because what I see is that Drug Court got sixty-four, five, fifty-five.
Right. And the therapeutic docket got ninety-three, five hundred.
Correct.
And they, so that's a total of a hundred and fifty-six, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars. And the combined requests from the two of them, according to what I've got, are about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Is that not correct?
That's not correct.
No, it was a hundred and eighty-five, nine, forty-seven was the total between the two.
Therapeutic docket asked for a hundred and ten thousand, and they got ninety-three, five. Drug court asked for seventy-five, nine, four, seven, and they got sixty-four, five, five, five.
That's what I have as well.
So both, they both got
So that so that, that would be the, one of the things that got changed from the first draft. Because when the version that I'm looking at says the therapeutic docket requested sixty thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yes, that, if that's the report, that was the, that was, that was the one that I didn't update from last year. One of them snuck by me, and that's the one that got by me. The initial request for OAR. So it has been updated to reflect those changes, the newest version of the budget website.
Okay, thank you.
That was updated, I think, maybe yes, yesterday, the day before, but it makes more sense now. I was worried for a second.
So there are a number of, of awards that were made that were based on the number of participants. How did that get figured? How, I mean, I'm looking at, for example, a couple of, if I'm looking at the correct numbers, you can tell me if I'm wrong. A couple of the Ready Kids programs, Ready Kids Counseling, they asked for a hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. They were put in a category that should have resulted in sixty-five percent of that being awarded, but they were given sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, similar for their early learning programs, similar for their healthy families program. I'm just wondering, how, how did somebody figure out what the appropriate amount per participant was going to be?
I can answer that question, or try to. I think I may have lost my master screen share, by the way. But, um, so what we noticed when we were doing this, and Misty and Chrissy correct me if I'm wrong here, we noticed that there were some, in some of the applications, when you, when you looked at the cost per participant between the county and the city, they were drastically different in some applications. And so when we were looking at the budget part of the process, we scored them. They scored where they, where they were. When it came under the budget part of it, it seemed inconsistent what they were doing in other, in other localities. And it didn't really seem like that's the way we should be funding those requests based on the cost per participant when you compared them to, you know, maybe what they're, what they're doing in the county.
So did you end up, I mean, just to, just to pick the, the easy one, Ready Kids Counseling, and they asked for a hundred eighty-three thousand, five, sixty-three. You gave them sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, which was roughly thirty-three percent of the ask. Whereas they were in a category that should have resulted in a sixty-five percent of the ask. The sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, do I gather from what you're saying, that you derived that by seeing what the per participant rate was, say, for Almar County? And then multiplying that by the number of participants for Charlottesville?
That was exactly what That was a strategy, yes.
And is that the, the per participant? Or the, the cost per participant? Was that based on their application to the county or based on the county's award? Or recommended, recommended award?
We can, the, the, this, this application process allows us to see what the county numbers look like, the participants in the county and what they're asking for from the county. So we can make a pretty good estimation about what the different rates of, for participant or cost would be.
But the calculation was based on their application amount. I don't know that we went back and looked at the actual award from the county, right?
Correct. There's two parts of the application process. Applicants have to submit a budget that indicates where they get their revenues. And so you can see what they, they put in, what they requested from the city. You can see where they requested from other funders, including the county. Also, in a part of their application, they have to report out on demographics of their participants, because these are operational programs. So you can see how many residents of the city they serve versus how many residents of Almar County or other localities. And so when we see that there is a discrepancy between how much funding is being requested by the city and what for, because also we ask them to explain any sort of budget increases from year prior. They give us a justification for that. When we do that and match that up with the number of city residents that they are directly impacting, that's how we decide to make accommodations based on other funding revenue requests.
Is that why, is that why MACA was also dropped so much?
Correct.
So, I mean, I suppose to an extent, it's, it's not really our problem, but it, it sounds like that is a change in the way that we have apportioned money in the past. To, to key it to the number of participants. Is that fair to say? I don't remember having seen that in years past.
Yeah, I personally can't really comment on that. I haven't, I haven't participated in the previous budget years. Trying to think how to best answer that question. Only I can answer that question is if you look at, really, it's, to me, it was about evaluating in the budget part of the process, what the comparative analysis was for the fiscal year based on what happens in the city with the same program that happens in the county. The programming, programming is the same. How do we, how do we analyze that from a budgetary perspective, not necessarily like quality of application or importance? But when we get to the budget process, if we're looking at fixed amount of money, how do we help provide to many organizations that are requesting money? How do we make those adjustments? That was the thought process behind it. I'm not sure if it's been done like that before.
Yeah, so, so Hunter, I can, I can chime in quickly. Of course, I didn't participate this year, but I know every year, one of the main things that I looked at when I reviewed these application was the number of beneficiaries. You know, if they were asking for two hundred thousand dollars only serving three people, then nah, but if they were, you know, doing that and serving, you know, asking for, you know, the amount based on the number of beneficiaries, that was something that we took into consideration, at least I did. And it was one of the questions that, that we asked. So I would say that as far as I recall, it has always been, and it will continue to be something that I, that I would, you know, always can consider. So I hope that, I don't think it's anything new.
Yeah, I can also add that this typically happens when you see a big difference, you know, and we don't really compare people to, you know, Flavana, you know, or Louisa, or some of the smaller counties typically a comparison to Almar County. But thanks, counselor.
Yeah, I would also add to that, you know, as we were looking to level fund the pot of money for vibrant communities, the, the, these applications in particular were more than double the application amount from last year as well.
The Ready Kids applications, or you mean?
Correct.
How about for MACA Head Start? Because that, that was another one that was subs, that a figuring
That one as well was almost double.
Wow, okay. Okay.
We did also look at, my muted note, we'd looked at other people too, and Um, we did also look at my muted note. We'd looked at other people too, and it. There were several applicants that did not have those drastic changes in cost per participant um from the county to the city. And so what we're looking at were the ones that were, you know, significantly different with the with the with the request of funding. And how was how it played out for participant. And so we looked at other ones as well, just to make sure that across the board, how it was looking.
Are there uh are there some agencies that received a significantly lower. Percentage or rating, I guess, which would drive the percentage as compared to the ratings they received last year? Or were they?
Understand your question. Could you repeat it?
Well, okay, I we've, one of the things we know is that if you categorize an agency as one A. Last year, but one B this year, they get whacked twenty percent. Uh, if you take them down from one A to two A, they get whacked by about fifty percent, actually by by about two thirds of the of the total amount. And one of the things we saw last year was that there were some agencies where the raters, for whatever reason. Uh, you know, the the two thousand, what was it, two thousand twenty raters. Might have rated things, the same agency, very differently from the twenty twenty-one raiders. I'm wondering whether you noticed that there were anything, there was anything that was rated. Significantly differently in twenty twenty-two from the way in which it had been rated in twenty twenty-one.
I'm not sure that we're able to answer that question right now without being able to compare ratings from our report last year to this year. But we can get back to you on that.
Well, I can I can pull that one up. Let's see. Somebody else asked a question. I'll come back to it. If somebody else has a question.
Yeah, well, well, I mean, this may relate to um some of the things that Lloyd looked up and I mentioned is. At the beginning that I'm a mentor with C four K and just happened to be there last night till seven o'clock. And I'm there every Wednesday with my mentee, who's a Buford students, and it was filled with. Um, a lot of city kids there. It's good to see that they're coming back. There's a lot of mentors there as well, working, doing STEAM project with with their students. I learned how to use um one of the gadgets last night, and we're working on this fantastic project together. And um, and was this another student there that was that actually finished jobs for high school several years ago, but was coming back. For resources and things. So anyways, it seemed to a lot of kids there, you know, and and it seemed like their score went down. And so I don't necessarily need a justification now, but just in general, because I thought that that was the type of thing that we wanted. Our nonprofits and things to to do, so um it just will help me better understand when I'm out there to. Understand why like programs like that, and it's probably a lot of, you know, others that may be similar, maybe it's a different focus. On grading or um scoring this year, but um. It's uh, it's I think is what we want with the the resources that that we that we give to nonprofits in the community. It's it's um, it was seven o'clock at night, full of students, working on projects, doing homeworks. And, you know, kind of a big gathering place for for students. So um, at some point before we get, make the final decision in probably two or three weeks, I'd just like a little bit more information.
On. I can actually give you information now.
Yeah.
Because last year, C four K was also not awarded money. But we counsel discussed it and requested staff to go back and look at that. Um, because the way we have written the priorities right now, C four K does not fall really into them well. Um, so staff and our graders actually graded it the exact same, I believe, last year. Um, and this is more on councils about not directing that area highly enough.
Yeah, well, I I think that, you know, if we want to see like less, and this is just one of those statements left money in public defender, police. And all those other things, we need to put money into mentoring and programs like this, you know, so but. And I guess we'll be working on our strategic plan. I know we're doing something in the beginning of April. I don't know if it's strategic plan or not, but I know that's um plan, you know, planned soon. But that's, to me, that's a a big, a big issue. It's a big problem if we don't have programs like that focused high enough to to even get. Scoring, so thank you.
And and I want to echo, C four K is a concern for me as well. Um, because I know the importance of having at least some governmental funding a lot of times for their grants. And um, even a small amount will give them leverage.
So I did find, just comparing last year's ratings to this year's ratings, there are a number of changes. Probably the the most significant change is in the rating for the Haven, which last year was given a one A. And a rating, and this year, if I'm looking at it correctly, gets a two B. Was there any? First of all, am I correct about that? And second, any reason why?
I believe that is correct. And, you know, we don't really get into like the review, the review process is what it is. You know, we have citizens that come in and do the reviewing. They come up with their determinations based on the scoring criteria and the matrix. We presented to council in the report, and that's really all I can say about it. That's really all I'm gonna, I can really say. It was a it was a team process. And they just didn't score as how they did last year, for whatever reasons that particular review team felt.
Okay.
With all due respect, not really sure how to answer how to say that. Respectfully, but that's the best I could I can come up with, I think.
I can anticipate that we will get questions from people for, you know, why, why last year, why this year, et cetera. And just figured if if there was an answer that could be given, it was better to be given early than than late. So we may get the questions anyway. Are there other questions? So if if other counselors don't have any other issues right now, should we go ahead? Uh, and move on to the public comment phase of things? We may have some other comments that we may wish to make after the public has commented as well. It seemed to me to be the the logical next step. Okay with that? All right, so uh, let's see, Mr. Dill Hunter, are you in charge of the public comment tonight?
Yes, Mayor Snook. I see a couple of hands raised now. The first will be Shelby Edwards. And you are on with counsel.
Everyone, keep in mind you have three minutes and be watching the watching the ticker. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Edwards.
Good afternoon, Charlottesville city councillors and stakeholders. My name is Shelby Marie Edwards. I usually heard hers. I'm the executive director of the Charlottesville Public Housing Association of Residents, also known as FAR. I'm a product of Charlottesville City School System and a Charlottesville native. I'm here today to talk about FAR's impact and implore you to fund us in the amount requested for Vibrant Communities Fund. If you're not familiar with FAR, in short, our work is designed by low-income residents for low-income residents. I started in this role as the first executive director of FAR in FAR's history just over a year ago. And I have the pleasure of ensuring their vision is actualized. Each year, FAR directly serves the lowest income people in the Charlottesville area. We do this via our internship program, which provides employment opportunities for current low-income residents. This program has produced just over seventy distinguished leaders in the area. Who have gone on to serve on the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, the FAR Board of Directors. And one of our graduates is a senior supervising organizer at the Legal Aid Justice Center. Our internship program includes learning about local government, public speaking, and it's an immersive four to six month experience. I also ask that you fund our redevelopment efforts. We are ensuring that residents are involved by hosting workshops, educating them on the redevelopment processes. And ensuring that the resident voice is centered. Our work also ensures that there is not a repeat of the travesty that we all know was done to Vinegar Hill. I look forward to seeing how this Vibrant Communities Fund process can be more equitable, while it is better than in years past. And we certainly appreciate the funding you've given FAR. It disappoints me that each year, an organization that is black-run, black-led, and services primarily black people. Has to continuously ask the city for funding. I can't emphasize enough the essentiality of this organization and our efforts. Additionally, FAR's application was more competitive this year, but we are slated to receive less funding. Uh, while I'm here, I would also like to endorse the Legal Aid Justice Center's application as well, especially because they provide valued support to FAR and our operations. In conclusion, thank you so much for the gift of your time this evening, and I appreciate all of you for your service to the residents of the city of Charlottesville. Have a good evening, y'all. Fun FAR.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Of course.
That was really upbeat there.
Next speaker will be Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you're on with counsel.
Thank you, and thank you for that introduction, Shelby. That really hyped up the whole program tonight. I really appreciate it. Um, thank you for allowing me to make a few comments tonight. One of the things I noticed um in your budget was the flat funding for uh C-Srap. And uh, was hoping to see a little bit more money put into that, as well as another uh point that Click coalesced. Coalesced about this week was the fact that I think the payment standards, we think the payment standards for your vouchers need to increase. Because uh, anecdotally, and I think probably if you connect it with your city department that um. You know, watches out on the the voucher program, that you would see a lot of people um have been starting to turn those vouchers in. Because the amounts on the vouchers are not enough to keep up with the rate of increase on rents in the city. So uh, we'd like to ask that instead of the current, I think it is one hundred and fifteen percent of fair market value. That the payment standard be increased to one hundred and fifty percent um of fair market rent. I think that would uh allow for those families who do need that subsidy to be able to, or individuals to maintain. Stay safe, stable housing, to be able to uh locate something within the city that is um. A good option for them. So if you could take a look at that a little bit more closely, we'd appreciate it. Also, we'd also like to ask for um a thorough plan from the council on how to use the next. Uh, ten million dollars of ARPA money that will be coming in. Create a plan that will as deeply and as significantly as possible help local residents. Um, who are continuing to struggle with the effects of COVID. I noticed, you know, what your um uh emergency payment. Funding look like. I'd like to see a little bit more robust in that, because COVID's not going away. We might be working and operating as if we're trying to go back two years ago, two and a half years ago. But uh, when people get sick or when kids get sick, people don't work, kids don't go to school, somebody's got to watch them. It creates a mushroom effect, and hopefully some of that ten million dollars can go to mitigate that. Um, to kind of harp back on some of the capital improvement money. Uh, Click still is advocating for the council to fully fund the Affordable Housing Plan with at least uh ten million dollars annually. As has had been talked about for quite some time, and also to look at that allocation with a robust tax increase. But with a concurrent maximum tax and rent relief for every um low-income person in the city. Which for us would be under fifty percent AMI. And on that, I thank you for your time, and you have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Next up is Angela C. Angela, pardon me with your last name. I'll let you pronounce that for everyone. You're on with counsel.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Snook and city councillors. My name is Angela Cholfee, and I'm the executive director of the Legal Aid Justice Center. I'm speaking in support of FAR and L A J C and asking for full funding of FAR to the extent of their ask. And restoration of nearly fifty percent cuts to existing vibrant communities funding for L A J C. So first, I'd like to ask you to prioritize restoring FAR's funding to the full extent of their ask. FAR is one of the really bright spots in the racial equity conversation in Charlottesville. Resident-led redevelopment of public housing has put Charlottesville on the map in national conversations about public housing. Race and how we can move forward equitably. And frankly, to make progress on racial justice issues, the city needs. And is lucky to have a strong and thriving community-led organization like FAR. Turning to my own organization, L A J C's legal services help low-income individuals and families recover stolen wages. Escape predatory lending schemes, access critical federal benefits like social security and Medicaid, bringing resources to our community. And even secure appropriate special education and mental health services. Legal services are just as essential for Charlottesville residents this year as they were last year and the year before that. In fact, with legal protections for tenants set to expire in June and rent relief funds running out. We are likely to see a large increase in evictions in the coming months. Just eight months ago, the city agreed that legal services were essential, appropriating ARPA funds for an eviction prevention program. That were subsequently awarded to L A J C. The city received a lot of praise for that. When the city asked us to take on additional work and therefore additional expenses, it was with the express premise that our existing level of service. Was not adequate to meet the overwhelming need for eviction defense and prevention. We have taken on those additional cases. But now, by cutting our vibrant communities funding in half, the city proposes to undercut its own commitment to protecting the legal rights. Of low-income Charlottesville residents facing eviction, loss of public benefits, debt collection, and more. I hope you will reconsider the proposed cuts to FAR and L A J C. Thank you so much.
A reminder to attendees, if you have joined us by phone, you may press star nine to raise your hand and get into the speaker queue. Next up is Andrew Shelton. Andrew, you're on with counsel.
Uh, good evening, counsel. Thank you for your time. Uh, I just wanted to speak to ask that y'all please consider. Re-upping the funding that I believe was allocated in twenty seventeen for rent relief for the Jefferson School African-American Heritage Center. They do a great number of wonderful things for our community. They're very active. I would consider them an anchor in our town. Uh, particularly in my mind is the spearheading of the project, the Swords and the Plowshares project. Where they're going to be repurposing those statues. Uh, I believe that it's very important for ongoing racial justice issues in this town to continue to provide them the rent relief. That we have for the last few years, and I would like y'all to consider re-upping that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Torres. Lisa, you're on with counsel.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Mayor Snook, councillors, city manager Rogers and staff. Uh, thank you all for your hard work and dedication to Charlottesville City always, but especially during budget season. Um, equity, education, housing, I do not envy you these really challenging decisions. I am here speaking tonight to ask that you consider um support specifically for the Jefferson School. African-American Heritage Center, also to, you know, to consider extending that two thousand seventeen equity package for them. They are a touchstone for our African-American community. Um, the wide array of events at the Heritage Center is hosted is beyond impressive. Um, they exemplify all things arts, cultural, educational, and and really are what equity is all about. Um, Dr. Andrea Douglas and staff work tirelessly. They offer training and supports. Um, sponsored to Charlottesville City Schools and Almaral County Public School Educators in the Embracing Our Narrative Teaching Training Institute. Um, this is invaluable. Um, the value of preparing and equipping our teachers who then turn and educate our kids. Um, the also the work that has been done by Jordi Jaeger, mapping racist housing covenants, the infrastructure. Again, this awareness um has been shared um and with our students. Our students have had the opportunity to work with him specifically on on. I mean, through the data and the different covenants that we have here right in Charlottesville. Um, again, they um deserve our support and um we deserve to do all that we can to maintain what they offer our community. So I think I thank you again for your time and hope that you will reconsider um the contribution and um to support them. Have a great night.
Let me, let me ask a question for either Mr. Smith from his graves or actually anybody. I don't believe that the Heritage Center has a request in the Vibrant Community Fund process. Am I right about that?
Their application came in the art section.
But it was not specific to rent relief.
No. What was the question again? You said Jefferson School?
The Heritage Center has made a request for rent relief to the Vibrant Community Fund.
Okay, um, I mean, we've gotten a bunch of emails in the last few days about this. And I, the first thing I noted in response to one email was if this is a reference to a twenty seventeen agreement of some sort, none of us on council right now were on council in twenty seventeen. Somebody provided what was supposed to be a link so that I could look it up. It turns out not to be a link to to the document that I'm looking for. Uh, so I have no idea what what the agreement might be. What, what, what the two, you know, two hundred, the figure's been thrown around at two hundred thousand dollars in in rent. I gather that is rent that we are foregoing. Is that perhaps what's going on here?
No, it would be rent we would be paying because we don't own the Jefferson School. The Jefferson School agency owns the Jefferson School, and then the Jefferson, the African American Heritage Center rents from them. We rent for them for the Carver Rec Center. Does, how much do we pay for the Carver Rec Center?
Uh, it's about five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year. Um, and I think for twenty-three, it's going, if I recall correctly, it's going up to about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, and so we are a tenant in that building, just like um the Heritage Center. And um, I believe in the past, oh, in the eighteen FY eighteen and the FY nineteen budget, there was a request made of council. Four hundred and fifty thousand in eighteen, I think, and five hundred thousand in FY nineteen. Um, those payments were given to the Heritage Center to pay um down on several years' rent. Um, I think most of it was rent, and there was a small portion that was maybe for some program development or something. Uh, and I think they've just come to the end of that funding. And so now they're coming back to request additional funding for uh their rent that would be due in twenty-three, which I think is two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, I mean, it sounds to me like this, this is an issue, number one, it's not a VCF issue, really.
Correct.
Number two, it's a a general fund issue uh that uh Ms. McGill seems to have more, more specific information on it certainly than I do. And I don't know whether other people share my level, level of ignorance of it. I guess maybe what I would like to ask is that uh some, some uh group of staff people come up with uh a memo to us that would detail these things, perhaps get a copy of the equity agreement from twenty seventeen, put it all together so that we can make sense of it, because clearly people want us, is some people want us to be doing something that's worth two hundred thousand dollars. And we don't have, I for one, don't have the information which based that request.
That is being worked on, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask staff to, in fact, look at all of our uh leases of this nature. Um, and uh so that we could understand them. So we'll come back, uh come back to you with uh with clarity and uh or Jefferson School and other places where we uh we're either paying rent or 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 paying for somebody's lease, so that we understand the basis of why we're doing it and 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 the relationship with uh with the city.
Okay.
And in reference, I think the um equity agreement that's being referenced, I think that's a reference to the equity package or the equity pot of money that council appropriated, which I believe was in um twenty seventeen um that uh allocated money to be used for equity programs. And it was, it was multiple things, not just the Jefferson School. Because as I said, the money that they got was prior to that. Well, I'm sorry, no, that's not correct. It was in twenty seventeen. So they, I think the money that they maybe got was part of that because those equity funds were in the council Strategic Initiatives Fund.
One of the, to, to, just to touch on something that I mentioned a week or so ago, uh probably revealed my ignorance at that time as well, is the relationship between the the programming that goes on, which I gather is what they're asking for, and the support for the school, the building itself, which is owned by a different entity. A year, year and a half ago, we were asked to forgive a, I think it's a five million dollar uh loan. Uh, and I, when we start talking about all of those, I know that they're technically separate entities, but they're all brought together in my mind, and I would like to know kind of a full package of of what all that information is. Because there are a lot of the related decisions there. I, I think all of us would agree we want to be supportive of the Jefferson School, but I think we need to know uh what the entire picture looks like, so.
Right. And that'll be included in our package. We'll, we'll, we'll dig down on that one.
Thank you.
And I would only add, um, which may just be re-doing the same thing. I think the importance of looking at, um, you know, a sustainable long-term plan for that, because obviously it was from the Strategic Initiatives Fund in the past of one-time funding, and I'm guessing we could cobble together, you know, two hundred thousand this year. Um, but how do we have a sustainable plan to do that over five, ten years instead of just continually being in this situation?
That's the question, right.
And of course, that should also then marry with the, we're paying half a million dollars in rent for a center. Meanwhile, we only get a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in rent from all of the buildings that we own that are rented out to other organizations.
Yeah.
Um, which really kind of disturbs me.
And then, the current balance of our Strategic Initiatives Fund, is that like a hun, around a hundred twenty thousand now?
Roughly.
I think it's about a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Okay.
Okay, all right. It's why, so to to other folks who want to talk about the Jefferson School, happy to hear from you, but recognize, number one, it's, it's not actually on the agenda for this evening, and number two, it will be on the agenda at a later point in the, in the process. Uh, so I don't want to cycle anybody's creativity in in speaking with this, but um it it will be discussed more fully later on. Mr. Del Hunt, do we have somebody else?
We do. Our next raised hand is actually Andrew Douglas.
Ah.
You're on with counsel.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas.
Hello, good evening, uh Mayor Snook, uh Vice Mayor Wade and and counsel. It is kind of a fortuitous conversation that I just but was able to join because I can answer some of the questions that you posed. Um, the Jefferson School did receive in twenty seventeen funding from an equity package. It was um a two lump sums. The first one paid for four hundred and fifty thousand. And the second one paid for five hundred thousand. Those funds went directly into escrow to um in fact, support and secure the um refinancing of the Jefferson School City Center. Um, and so, to the extent that the Heritage Center is an anchor tenant of the Jefferson School City Center, and that the city is the second anchor tenant of the city center, the Heritage Center is the youngest member, I would say, of all of the organizations that were part of that um city center complex. But we have not been able to benefit necessarily from the funding that um the city offered, with the exception of our rent. We have, however, continued to provide programming, has, has been discussed already by others that include um teacher training, that includes the diversification of our cultural offerings in Charlottesville. And so while we're not on the docket tonight, we do find that we are coming to the end of the funding. We had intended to speak to um former city manager about this um last year to create a plan so that we could in fact make um a request to you all, but on the day that we were supposed to meet was the day that he announced that he was resigning from the city. Um, and so we have not been able to recuperate or regroup in order to have a appropriate conversation about this. Um, but it is something that is in um pending that I would argue um has impact on the health of the entire city center. So if it is possible for us to have a conversation so that we could fully explain what this um, where we are, that would be greatly appreciated. The funding ends for us in November of twenty twenty-two. Um, and so while um this original was considered one time, it was also with the notion that this would be ongoing funding, given the kind of funding that other organizations like ours receive from the city and have done for a number of years. So we're hoping to be able to have a conversation with you all about that.
Okay, thank you.
Our next raised hand is a phone participant, two, two, seven, six, nine, six, one. You are now on with counsel.
And please identify yourself. We're not hearing anybody.
It appears that their phone is muted.
Uh, now it's unmuted. Phone caller, are you there? They appear to be unmuted, but not coming through. Maybe we can, we'll come back to them. Is there somebody else?
Certainly, we can come back to them. Sherry Lewis is next. You are on with counsel.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Lewis. I am here, um, and I'm so glad that Dr. Douglas had an opportunity to speak to you. I'm here as a relatively new into my second-year member of the Board of the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center. And I um, much of what I just wanted to comment, thank goodness, the questions were answered by her um about why we're in this process um and not in your budget. I, I would say that I signed up to participate in um this budget session because it was advertised as pertaining to nonprofits. And I didn't see, and the public advertisement, and I might have just missed something, but I didn't see that it was limited to Vibrant Community Fund applicants. So I apologize that we've brought um the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center's needs before you this evening, but I'm glad that we can. As you know, the center is the educational, cultural, historical, and social center for the African American um community in Charlottesville, and very much in all, everything that it does, in all of those functions. It supports the city's equity goal, which is the purpose of this fund. As you know, it's a vital asset to the community. It is quite distinct from the building in which it's housed, which is where the rent payments um in the eighteen and nineteen cycle went to. Those did not go to programming for the Heritage Center. Um, we are the cultural center for the African American Heritage Center. We also support non, other nonprofits that are part of the Vibrant Community Fund that you've um, that you've decided to fund, including the Virginia Film Festival, Virginia Festival, the book, and dozens of other cultural and equity organizations. I won't go to the funding and the, and the budget and all that, but I'm hoping that not only can the city find a way to give the rent assistance, rent assistance to sort of restore what the city's done in the past, um and and make that support comparable to other nonprofits. There's a half million that's supported in rent to McGuffey. There's a hundred and forty-four thousand to the Discovery Museum. Certainly, hopefully, our goals and purposes are equivalent to those other organizations because we do a lot more than arts. Um, but we do support, um, just support creative arts as well, along with a lot of other things that the center does. Um, I won't take up any of more of your time, but I would just respectfully request that attention be given to the Heritage Center um in the general budget and perhaps also in the Vibrant Community Fund as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
We'll go back now to our phone participant, and you may need to press star six to unmute. Two, two, seven, you are back on with us.
Not hearing anything. I don't see them as as one of the options. Okay, now it's showing it is muted.
And I believe that star six is the phone function to unmute for the participant. I've also uh sent in ask to unmute. Our next participant, if we do come back to them, is also a phone participant, so we can try that.
Why don't we try the other person and see whether we can master the phone issue?
Our next speaker will be uh area code seven, five, seven, seven, three, eight, eight, four, one, eight. And the same thing, you may need to press star six to unmute. You are on with counsel.
Hi, um, counsel, my name is Salita Carr. And I'm here to say I support the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition's uh recommendation. And I want to share information with you about FAR's funding. My feelings towards FAR, uh, towards FAR have really grown as I've worked and walked with this organization. All the community have questions and concerns, and now there's a nonprofit that is education, the sector that many nonprofits pay, they are here to support. Unfortunately, the low income never sees to get this so-called help. So um, support has been given to many organizations. Here we have FAR unfunded for their internship and their housing development program. I am a former FAR intern, and I can speak on how information, how important both um programs are needed within the community. Here's there's a nonprofit that is creating um and catering to the needs of our cities. Now, uh, cities low income. No one is doing work like FAR. And if, and I, and I say that with a big F, a huge F, then why don't the people in the community that need to help not receiving the help? I'm a native of Charlottesville, you know, this is my home. And I utilize most of the nonprofits that say they cater to the needs of our community, but none of my doing the work that FAR is doing. I hear teachers and counselors talk about FAR. And if, and if these individuals are talking about your business in a positive manner, then this business must be doing something right. Every business wants to be talked about. That's how news spread by social means. So I've given y'all my little spiel, so if you haven't or don't understand what I'm asking you guys to consider is that FAR can do more when the city funds this organization for the full amount they have requested so that they can keep on helping families. So I'm so grateful that I picked up the fire on my door as I um accepted the internship program, so please um give them what they ask for. That's my spiel. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Next up, we will hear from Alexis Cooper. Alexis, you are on with counsel.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time today. My name is Alexis Cooper. I'm a form, I'm a former FAR graduate. Um, as of last year, I'm now a FAR assistant. I'm also currently helping with the hosting of the FAR internship. Please fund, please fund FAR. FAR has Please fund, please fund FAR. FAR has changed my life and it's currently changing many other low-income residents. Thank you for your time once again and your consideration. Fund FAR. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Up next, we have Tim Wallace. Tim, you are on with council.
Um good evening, uh Mayor Snook and uh members of city council. My name is Tim Wallace. I'm the director of development at the Legal Aid Justice Center. Um and I want to um throw out a fund FAR as well. Um I'm actually not here to talk about LEJC's funding at all. I wanted to um just make a comment about the decision-making process and how the matrix works. Um which is currently funding is decided by the importance and by the quality of the application. Uh and I believe strongly and I've seen other cities, um like for example, the kind of Fairfax that does it this way. Where the score on the application is used as a threshold as opposed to a factor in how much funding is provided. And what that does is it removes the skill of people like me who are professional grant writers. Who then get a leg up in the process against other organizations that might not have people specialized in grant writing. Um and you say essentially, is this organization solid enough for the city to consider the fund? If yes, then let the decision about how much, what percentage of their request. Be funded, be a factor entirely about the importance of their services to the city. And at that point, when the decisions and the recommendations get to city council, you're not trying to evaluate. If 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 an organization is in the wrong place on the list of percentages of how much gets funded. You're not trying to evaluate how well their proposal was written. You're just answering the question that city council is. Much better qualified to answer, which is how important is this service? And you're only having to look at that point at one factor in making that decision. And it may be that you need more than four. Gr- grades to give in that space. But I think that would be a more equitable um and an easier way. For the city to make decisions about how much to fund, once you've decided which organizations to fund. Um so um yeah, that's all I had. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you for doing the hard work that you're doing. Um you know, budget decisions are difficult and we appreciate all of the work that y'all put in for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Next up, we have Elizabeth Murtaugh. Elizabeth, you are on with council.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Liz Murtaugh, I'm the public defender for Charlottesville and Almarle County. I just thought maybe I could try to answer some of the questions that were raised earlier when we talked about my budget requests. What I've done is I've, it's in two different parts. One is just asking the council to approve a budget that would allow. Um need to be able to provide a supplement to three positions that are in my office that are currently not. Receiving any kind of supplement from the city or from the county. I've made the same request for the county. Um one was a new position that was that we got two years ago as a paralegal. That position. Was given to us because of the body worn camera and the need on requirements that. We need to be able to look at body worn camera worn by the police officers when they encounter our clients. One is also for a new legal assistant with the volume of cases that we've have more cases. We needed additional staff to be able to. Set up files and do kind of the data entry information. And another was for a new position for an assistant public defender one. So those are the three positions that I'm asking for a supplement. To be able to give to them. Right now, the on average, there's a thirty-seven percent. Um greater salary in the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office than there is in my office. The way that funding works is I am a state agency, I am a state employee. Um funding is similar from on the state level that goes to the com- through the comp board that goes to the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office that comes through the city's funding stream. Um there is a supplement that's given that the city does for the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office and what. I'm trying to do is ask for some of that funding to have some parity and pay equity between being a defense. Representing criminal defendants um rather than just the prosecutor's office and. It's very similar. The package I've provided is shows what we've asked for as well in in the in the county. The other um requests that I had was with being a part of this wonderful group of people that got together for many months. Um in imagining in just Charlottesville, it became real apparent that if we could get in early on. Um when bail is being looked at and being considered by the judge, if we can advocate for someone's release, it really affects their family, affects their ability to. Keep their job. Um it's just a whole, a whole array of things that is so important to get an attorney in there right away. So that's what that position would be designated solely for that. Um so thank you for, I agree with everybody else, the hard work you do and I appreciate your opera, your um. Your hard work and your help with that you've always given our office. Thank you so much.
Ms. Murtaugh, before you go, can I just ask, we have no information about anything that wasn't awarded. What have you asked for that was not given to you?
So I've I've asked for um su- supplement, an additional supplement for these three positions. Um the total amount would be a a total of eighty thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars to my office. Um that's a a big jump with asking for the salary supplements for the three positions. That does not include the amount for the new attorney position that was the, I took a half. Or just the beginning level um Commonwealth's Attorney salary, took that by half and that's thirty-seven, five hundred and two dollars. For the part-time position. The this, the county has not uh funded that position to make it full-time. But um I I hope to to talk to them and try to encourage them to participate as well.
So the total of amounts that you had requested that were not put into the budget is about a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
Uh well, it's so some, sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven did get put in the budget, so it's a, it's a difference of about. I don't, I guess a little bit less, yeah. I I'd have to use my calculator, Mr. Snook, to figure that out.
Tell you what, send me an email.
I'll send you an email.
I I'd like to, because what what we see is, and in fact, the first time I saw what you were awarded, I'm sure it's in the budget someplace, but I wasn't focusing on it for tonight. Was was in the PowerPoint tonight, so I have no idea what you had asked for that was not given.
Oh, I'll be happy to send you the packet of materials because to 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 all the council members, if you're, if you want to see what. Where I had a calculator, could you add the numbers?
If my math is correct, it was a difference of nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Right, that was for the supplements. That did not include the new position.
Okay.
Yeah, the new position, which I I recognize that's that's a really big ask because that would be kind of a commitment, bringing someone on like that. But that was thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
So roughly fifty-seven thousand of what you would have wanted was not approved. Okay.
And because this is a contractual agreement, we would need to be doing, this would be a continuous. It wouldn't be one that we would be looking at every year. If we agreed to it this year, we would need to put it in the budget for a conti-
Right.
I just want to, I just want to make sure everyone on council and everybody's very clear about that. That unlike the the vibrant community grant parts. Um vibrant community grant, we look at every year and evaluate every year our contractual applications. We do look at them and then make sure that they're still doing what they're supposed to be doing, but council doesn't evaluate and look at usually individually on those.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Looks like our final raised hand is our initial phone participant. We can try once more, uh two, two, seven, six, nine, six, one. You have been allowed to talk now. You will need to unmute.
Caller, we're still seeing you as muted. Well. I think we have to. I guess I would say caller, can you send us an email to council@charlottesville.gov? We're not trying to to not hear you, but we can't hear you literally. Um so it's. And is that the last, the last public participant, Mr. Dillhart?
Uh one more hand came up during that.
Okay.
Andrew Pennick, you are on with council.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh thank you all for uh the service that you give to the city. Uh I'm calling to s- and to support the Meadow Creek Multi-Use Trail in Greenbrier neighborhood uh where I live. Um I know that uh this has been a project that's been under consideration for more than fifty years in the city. And um as the parent of a disabled child, the chance to add forty-seven hundred linear feet. Of ADA accessible uh walking paths is really important to us. Um the Rivana Trail system is great, but it's not great for a wheelchair. Um and I think it would be really wonderful to be able to connect our neighborhood to the city or to the county, to be able to have pedestrian access to the post office. Uh to be able to connect some of the kids that live um in the apartment complexes that surround Greenbrier to the. Facilities and amenities of Greenbrier. Um and I just think it would be a great thing for the city. I know that it's an expensive project. It's a capital project. Um but as my understanding is, there's some uh money from federal money that might be uh useful with the pandemic relief funding. Um yeah, and so I was just uh calling to voice my uh needs of my part of our little community and um thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pennick.
I see no further hands raised.
All right.
Is that the trail that would need the tunnel through the, under the railroad bridge?
I think it would, it it would connect to, I mean, if if you were to extend it all the way out, yes, but. Uh the the portion that they're looking for uh construction funds for does not include trying to go underneath the railroad bridge.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Brian and I um were campaigning, we went and Brian, I think that's the one that we went on and and I think it would be. A great addition. I hope that staff is looking at that and because I think there are some funds out there that. You know, that maybe if we parlay a little of our funds for a lot of the federal funds or even no of our funds. Um but um kind of an endorsement, you know, I think will go a long way, so um. Uh I hope Chris Jensen and James Fries is maybe looking into to that. That's something else that's on their plate to do, so.
I know that one of the things that uh I've talked about with the neighbors and the members of the Neighborhood Association. Has been the question of whether the the federal ARPA funds can be used for that purpose since. There's a specific provision in the, at least in the regulations. I don't know whether, I doubt it's actually in the bill. But in the regulations, it talks about uh trails and open spaces and recreational opportunities. That uh that could be you, you could use federal money for. So if uh and I know that I passed that email on to people a couple of weeks ago. I would hope that at some point, somebody could look at it and say, yeah, sure, we can make that work or no, it doesn't work for the following reason. Um but I I had put that uh pu- put the bug in some folks here. And uh the neighbors keep reminding me because of course, that's the neighborhood that I live in and so it's very easy for them to remind me. So anyway.
The federal Parks Department got a lot of money recently with the bill, the B I L. Um and to actually have some new contacts to reach out to that hopefully we can get some money here.
Okay, I also wonder uh because I know um Vice Mayor Wade, you had talked about computers for kids. Is there any portion of a computers for kids uh program that could be the subject of of our related funds? Because it would seem to me that if we were looking at the responses to COVID and the different and the computer availability for. Kids to be able to do things in a hybrid fashion or some other, other than in-person fashion, computers are obviously essential. Is that? Is that something that's that's doable? Does anybody know?
Uh well, actually, I this week up in the conference up in DC sat down with some lawyers for quite a while, actually, and. Um ARPA is in some ways more flexible than CARES money was, but in other ways, less flexible. Um the reporting factors of ARPA are actually becoming much more complex because CARES money was. Emergency money and ARPA money is planned money. Um so we just have to be very careful with some of this. Um. Priorities are being given to underserved neighborhoods first. Also, anybody that might be considered a subcontractor, excuse me. Um anybody.
Happens to the best of us.
Yeah.
Everything's going through everything right now. That was, yeah, um but. We have to be very careful if with some of this with the ARPA money. Um if we subcontract to anybody. Please stop calling right now. Call dad. Um. We have to make sure they are federally, that they're following all federal guidelines as well. Um and so actually, I'm hoping to meet with Chris Cullen and go through some stuff and give him some information and some contacts. Um to talk to, to so that we can really make sure we're evaluating various processes. But like I said, there are Department of Interior. I've got a, I made a contact up there. And actually brought them for, talked to them about potential funding we could get for a slave monument and I'm hoping to get Jeff Warner in touch with them. Um as we got, you know, we got a few weeks ago on the Historic Resources Committee. Um brought us information for with what descendants wanted for the community. And I'm sure we could also talk to them about something like this as well.
Uh um I know, Mr. The this, the the specific trail that Mr. Pennick was asking about. Uh because it's tied to neighborhoods to a certain extent. I mean, one of the goals of that trail. Is to allow students who live at Mickey Drive on, you know, relatively uh under, under uh. Funded area to be able to walk straight to Greenbrier School without having to try to walk along the very dangerous Brandywine Drive. And so that that's one reason why it was thought that that, or at least that part of the trail. Might be so, it might be uh able to be used for uh with federal money. So.
Oh, I think we can, I mean, I think we can actually probably get other money as well from the feds is what I'm saying. Um hopefully that we can. Save some of the ARPA money to for some other things and address because a lot of money came to the Parks Department.
Okay, so that's, that's something that again, we were not going to decide tonight, but I wanted to be responsive in some way to Mr. Pennick. As well as to the other neighbors who have been reaching out to us recently and to say that. Uh perhaps to the city manager and all of the many folks who work underneath the city manager. See if you can't figure out a way to make that happen. It's not going to be with VCF funds, but there may be some other federal funds available for uh for it all. Do other other counselors have have comments that we want to make at this point or Mr. City Manager or the. Uh questions that you have for us about, you know, what what we want or what you want to be doing or what the next steps are forward?
Well, we we have scheduled uh budget sessions uh uh going forward. We. We uh on Monday night, we will have uh as part of the city managers report. Some discussion on the schools. We pass some continuing conversations, at least Chrissy has. Uh with the school system there and we will uh be able to report to you uh what those conversations were and. And how they may uh factor into a solution that we're trying to reach. On uh on the reconfiguration ish issue and the whole school funding question.
All right.
And uh so we look forward to that uh on my, on Monday night. And uh Sam, Ashley, any other points that you want to make at this point on the budget? Chrissy?
Uh Sam and Ashley have anything and then I'll just wrap up with the items I think we have to follow up on.
Yeah.
I think there's, yeah, there's, there's just a few things we'll have to follow up on overall, but we'll we'll get working on that tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
So the items I had on our list to follow up on were to provide some more information on the Region Ten Request and Funding Formula. Uh the African American Heritage Center will tee that up for a further conversation in another work session. Uh, the African-American Heritage Center will tee that up for further conversation in another work session. Um, additionally, we'll get some more information on the multi-use trail, uh, at Meadow Creek. And I believe that was all I had. Did I miss anything?
I would just add to it, looking at, um, FAR and CRHA's requests, particularly how they connect to investments we're already making in the resident-led redevelopment process. And when it comes to CRHA, um, at least beginning a conversation about, uh, you know, what if anything could it look like for CRHA to be a contractual agency, given how closely they work with us, similar to some of those other agencies? Those are the ones that come to mind for me.
Okay.
And I guess there was the piece too about the public defender, right?
Right. That's right.
Okay.
Again, that's not, that's not as a vibrant communities fund issue, but perhaps another, another budget issue.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Mayor or Ms. Hamel, could, could you help me, uh, once again, uh, in terms of the, um, schedule going forward or, or, uh, Mr. Rogers, in terms of the budget development as we go forward? Um, looking at the schedule, I see the, the next items that are up. The actual, I guess, vote on a tax increase for real estate. Looks like that happens, the first hearing is on April 4th, is that right?
So Monday, I'm sorry.
Go on, Chrissy, I've not looked at the schedule. What, there you go. Thank you.
Uh, Monday night, the 21st will be the public hearing on the real estate tax rate. Um, the commissioner will also present to you some information, um, on the personal property tax rate, lowering, potential of lowering that rate. Um, there'll also be public comment available on the budget Monday night. Um, the, on the 4th, April 4th, will be a public hearing on the meals tax increase and also the official public hearing on the budget. And then, um, the final adoption would be on April 12th. In between there, we have two other work sessions. Um, March 31st will be the CIP work session. And then, um, next week will be the works, the community budget forum.
Okay, and then I guess we'll see sort of the implications of, you know, the school reconfiguration project based off what we talked about, I guess, last week. And the impact to a potential real estate, um, increase, a tax increase. I'll have some more data soon, hopefully. And then we'll need to make a decision one way or the other about what that number needs to be in terms of a real estate tax increase before April 4th, is that right?
I think that sounds, sounds about right. And, and we have to, uh, we agreed last week that we, we would come back with some scenarios. And, um, Chrissy and her, and staff are working on those scenarios for schools. And come, come back with those, uh, so that you can, you have the information you need.
Great, thank you so much.
Ms. Robertson can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think technically speaking, um, the amendments from council, um, come after the public hearing on April 4th.
Mm-hmm.
Could you explain, could you explain to me what that means, Ms. Hamel?
Ms. Robertson, you want to?
So it's just a procedural, um, it's just a procedural issue. Um, the, the charter in the city code contemplated that the city manager presents you with the first, um, version of the proposed budget. And then you have a public hearing, um, to, um, hear, you know, comments about what's in the budget. And then after you complete your public hearing process, um, you as city council then decide whether, uh, you want to approve the budget or whether you'd like to make some additions or, or changes to it. And then, um, but you don't do that until after you've been through the public hearing process.
So af- after April 4th?
Correct.
Yes.
Or, or is the, is the, the public hearing on March 21st? With, what's the difference between those two public hearings?
You, you can, um, you can, you're allowed to have as many public hearings as you would like to. But traditionally, the, um, city manager's office has designated one, um, one date as an official public hearing. And so you, you, you typically hear comments from the public at different work sessions. You may have sort of a, an informal, um, um, time that you allow people to comment. But there's an official public hearing that will publish notice of in the newspaper. And, um, I think, uh, that is someone that Chrissy is identifying as, as, uh, being scheduled for April 4th.
April 4th.
So as a practical matter, we do that on April 4th. According to our, our layout of meetings and so on, the next time that we would absolutely plan on talking about it would be when we would approve it on April 12th.
Wow, right.
And so, uh, although we have a time set out for the seventh, uh, for a possible budget meeting or hearing or some work session or something, and I'm just a little bit leery of going from the, the first time that we have the official public hearing to no further discussion until we vote on it on August, on April 12th, which historically has only been about a 15-minute meeting because we have to be at the planning commission meeting by six o'clock.
Yeah.
So if we're going to have any significant discussion of what we're, what we were hearing on April 4th, it seems that we're making the meeting on April 7th, probably the time when we would finalize something.
I think that's right.
In which case, we'd all better remove the word possible from our calendars for April 7th because it sounds like the real word is necessary.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right. So that's the schedule.
All right. And I think that, that basically takes us through the designated agenda. Is there anything else that people would like to talk about? Or can we actually adjourn a minute early? I see one thumbs up for adjourning a minute early. Hearing no objection, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.